...attendants who wish to ask a question or make a comment must wait to be recognized by the chair before speaking. Once recognized, be prepared to state your name and address for the record and speak loudly for all to hear. All questions and comments must be directed through the chair and I will call upon board members and/or the applicant as needed to respond. The board will then move into a period of deliberation where it will determine whether or not it closes the public hearing and moves to a vote or continues the public hearing to a later date. A few quick reminders before we begin, we request that participants in this evening's meeting remain respectful to attendees, board members, applicants, and staff. Please be concise in your comments and presentations to ensure that sufficient time is available for others to comment and for the board to deliberate. Please turn your phones to silent and refrain from side conversations so that all participants in the meeting can hear. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda tonight is signed site plan approval for 717 Washington Street Lavish Aesthetics.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Am I supposed to go up here?
If you want, yeah.
Okay.
We're just gonna go through the application a little bit.
Sure. So my name is Joslyn Petras, owner of Lavish Aesthetics, and I'm also the esthetician. So I was, currently I have the lease for the space, and I was wanting to put up a brand-new sign to replace the old one of rotting wood and to install a new sign, same size, in the same exact spot that it's currently in.
Great. I think we had a rendering in our email.
Yes.
Everyone had a chance to look at it? I believe it meets our dimensional requirements. I'm trying to find it here. What's the sign made out of?
PVC.
Okay. Sorry, is that the, that's the rendering right there, okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments or?
Yes, please, Derek.
Hi. I just wanna confirm, is this illuminated? Is there light on this?
There's no light.
No light? It's replacing. And it's mentioned it's a temporary sign?
So it'll actually be a permanent sign.
Right. That you'll come front of board again for the permanent sign?
So, I'm not sh- I'm all new to this. So, speaking with the sign company, this will actually be the permanent sign since it will be PVC, it's not actually the vinyl sign that people put up for, a temporary sign is actually gonna be permanent, the material is permanent.
Alright, so you're not gonna replace this? Once it goes up, that's it?
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, currently, there's a banner sign that's there, which is vinyl, and so I'll be, so the sign around the wall pole will be taking that completely down with the rotting wood frame, and he'll be replacing it with the PVC sign, same dimension.
Okay.
Sure. Sarah?
Would you mind forwarding over to our office a copy of that materials list from Signarama?
Sure.
If you have a chance? Thank you.
Everybody happy at this point?
Mm-hmm.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any final discussion? Alright, all those mayors say aye.
Aye.
Alright, welcome, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
What is it you do? What is it?
I'm an esthetician, so I've actually been here in Norwood for 12 years renting this studio.
I have no idea what that is.
So I do skincare and beauty.
As you can see, I haven't been.
Maybe you'll come for a visit.
Face for radio, right? So good-looking sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have some town approval of town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, you can still welcome the stay, but you're, you could, you could get out of here.
While you still can.
Unless you wanna hear about auxiliary housing or something.
Thank you, Ernie.
Good night.
So next up, approval of town meeting articles for submittal to the warrant. We have A, B, and C, we have three different articles here. Accessories Dwelling Units, number, letter A. Do you, do we wanna?
Sure. So, all three of these are, this is housekeeping. We've had these conversations, we've been talking about these articles since September. You reached consensus on all three of these, I think, by late November. So, the three articles for ADUs for commercial panels and for the 5.4 changes are exactly as they were when we wrapped up our conversation on this last and agreed that we were ready to proceed to town meeting. We're formalizing that with a vote. The Board of Selectmen's deadline to submit for the March town meeting is next week, so this is, unless you have some last-minute, you know, changes that you wanna deliberate on and make, the drafts that are before you have not been changed since you last arrived at consensus on the language.
Great. Mr. Chairman, just, Sarah, if you could, we decided, just refresh my memory, we decided to go minimum on this and follow state guidelines until we got more information from the state. Is that, is my memory certainly correctly?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, we just wanna fall in line with the state, so we have something on the books, and if the state changes, modifies, whatever down the line, we'll have the ability to fall in line again, but this is, we're not going, we're not going nuts here.
What's being proposed here, that's right, what's being proposed here is inserting the definition, which was in the legislation, putting that in our definitions in the law, and adding a row in the use table that allows it in the residential districts.
All residential districts?
Yes.
G, S, S, one?
Well, actually, anywhere there's, anywhere that the state says that it's allowable, it's allowable. So, that's all. It doesn't further condition dimensions, it doesn't further, the language doesn't talk about design requirements or standards, if that's something the board's interested in pursuing. The guidelines that the state is working on are not final. They have issued a draft, but it won't be finalized until after we need to submit for our town meeting. So, the approach that the board discussed taking and is reflected in what's before you tonight is very simple, just to bring us in compliance with the state law, and when we have those guidelines and they're finalized, we can assess what we'll be able to do, what we won't be able to do, and then if it's the wish of the board to proceed with further regulations for the ADUs that they can.
If I could follow up, Mr. Chairman. Two things, one, roughly, when would we schedule a public hearing, but more importantly, so we, this gets approved as written, and we went over this with Gary, and someone comes into his office, what guidelines does Gary have as far as dimensional and, and what, what does he have to regulate this, you know, telling someone?
So he's like any other building commissioner in the state right now, in that he doesn't have the guidance. This does go into effect February 2nd, whether we have something on our bylaw or not. So in some respects, this is a little bit like window dressing, right? If somebody came into the building department on February 3rd, you know, a month from now, and says, "I'd like a building permit for an accessory dwelling unit," he would make sure that it complies at least with the basics that we know of the state law, that it's half the gross floor area or 900 square feet, whichever is less. He'd review it to make sure that it had all of the safety egress measures that we discussed at length last year, but beyond that, if there were kind of real specific questions, he probably would be at a loss and would just have to implement the process as best he could in the absence of any state guidance.
And that, and again, I think we've, I know we had all these discussions, and with Gary, but you're saying that he'd be at a loss by us not putting in dimensional requirements and things like that? Are we handicapping him?
No, the state, so the state definition includes those dimensional requirements.
Yeah, okay.
So, an ADU that's permitted in February, again, regardless of what we do here with our proposed zoning, it wouldn't be larger than half the gross floor area of the primary dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. So that's in play. That's in play.
And the second part would be, traditionally, unfortunately, we've always had public hearings, you know, kinda like last minute.
Yeah.
Town meeting is February?
It's in March.
Oh, March, March, that's right.
So we would have this first thing in February.
So we would have a public hearing roughly the first week of February? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. Reminding everybody, I think it's been kinda touched upon over the past month, sorry, over the fall, a number of times.
Just, Mr. Chairman, one more thing, I know we, it's not a public hearing, whatever, but I know Selectman Plasko is here, and he, I just, if it's okay, if he has any comments on this particular one?
Selectman Plasko?
I personally am not understanding why we would adopt the, adopting, what is it, adopting the?
State regulations.
The draft regulations?
They're not draft regulations. So, the law has already been passed.
Yep.
The statute has already been amended, so the Zoning Act has already been amended.
Right.
What we're doing is incorporating the language we do have, which is the language that was put into the Zoning Act, which is simply where they can go and what the definition of them is, and, and not doing anything else until we know for sure whether the state would allow us to, for example, last year, when we put together a bylaw on ADUs to bring to town meeting, the board felt strongly that it would only wish to see attached ADUs. So ADUs that would be attached to the primary dwelling unit, either within the existing footprint or in an addition. It did not feel comfortable allowing in Norwood a detached ADU, so something like a tiny home or a unit above a detached garage or something like that. So, that was a local prohibition that, that this board wished to bring before town meeting. We don't know for sure yet whether or not the state would allow us to prohibit that. The draft guidelines are suggestive that we could not do that, so we would have to allow the detached units. But, but we don't have the guidelines yet to tell us, you know, filling in all of the parts.
I think the draft guidelines are probably pretty close to final, although there's still be some small comments on them. So I don't know if I'm missing a point here, but to me, it sounds like we're adopting, for the sake of adopting, the law, which if we don't adopt it, we're gonna have to follow the law anyhow, and it's important to, a couple of issues that we do have to control over, to have a discussion about those and decide if we'd wanna put restrictions in or not, such as short-term rentals, that type of thing that is allowed, and have that discussion and get that into the bylaw. So, I don't see adopting it now if without it, we're gonna follow the state law and all we're adopting is the state law language, which, it's a given that you have to follow the state law. What we need to do is be spending the time concentrating on getting the bylaw and any of the details if we want setbacks, if we want those kind of things, that the guidelines are allowing us to control if we want to, decide if we want to, and get them into a bylaw. I'd rather see us spending time working on that and coming back and say the March town meeting, I mean, the May town meeting, and getting that done, rather than adopt something that, doesn't matter what we adopt or not, we have to follow it. So it just seems like a wasted step and a waste of time unless I'm missing something. But it is important that we address those few points that we could control, decide how we wanna control, and do it as soon as possible, which I would suggest be tried a year for May rather than say a year from now, or September, let's do it as quickly as we can, although March is probably too soon.
Yes, Joe.
I just know that they like to get the zoning-type things in March. Would the selectmen be okay with May?
I'm sorry.
Would the selectmen be okay with us coming back in May? I know that generally, they like to get all of the zoning bylaws done in March, and that's been, that's been what we've been doing the last couple of years.
I don't wanna step out of line and speak for them, but the idea of having a separate meeting as a general managers, not the selectmen, and it's been said several times in our discussions that there are always exceptions, there are things that just can't wait to have to come up, so timing is of the essence. So this is something that's brought on us by the change of state law, and if we can't be ready, then we're gonna have to come back sometime in the future anyhow when you do decide to change those things.
I, I do think it's very reasonable, in this instance, if we're, you know, to put, if we, we could push it off to May.
Of course, I don't, I don't, I don't think the board would, and I don't mean this before that I like to concede how they would have any problem with it, plenty more coming back with another, at another time rather than have to be March.
Is this some, is this something that could be, when's your next meeting? You meet every week or every?
That's Tuesday.
Is that something that could be taken up?
Yeah, I think you intended to, I think, Sarah, speak up here, I think the intent was to get your votes, like, get it to the selectmen next week.
Yeah.
Yes, with, yes, I agree. I, I actually think the planning board's approach is consistent with what you're suggesting, which is to have a more full-throated ADU bylaw, but not to waste the time in putting it together until we know what we're legally allowed to put in that bylaw. So this is just to bring us into compliance as soon as we can.
We are compliant, it has to be a compliance law.
It's just putting it on the books, Bill, really, at this point.
We're not gonna be in compliance if you, the building expect to say refuse to issue a building permit, then you wouldn't be in compliance, otherwise, everyone's gonna be in compliance to state law.
I think it's helpful for him to have the guidance of a local bylaw to be able to.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree, and I think we're on the same page, Bill, just, I kinda agree, we put the local bylaw on as, as the state, and then we, we, as the state gives more guidance, which, as we knew with 3A, you know, it went a thousand different ways, then we can go back, 'cause I think the board, you know, is, and, under the, that we would like to put more, be more restrictive, you know, I mean, we wanted 750 feet, you know, not 900, we wanted, you know, I think, no detached, I think we worked last time, and I thought we were pretty restrictive, and I think we would wanna continue to do that, but I think just getting the basic state bylaw on our bylaw, and then we can go and change, as information comes down from the state, what we're allowed to do. If the state says 900 feet is it, you can't touch it, well then, we're stuck, you know, but.
I think the original proposal was trying to make in-law apartments as people knew them and allow that and nothing else, but the state won't.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't understand.
And therefore, we're never gonna be in compliance with it if we adopted that bylaw.
I really don't understand the state on this one, to be honest with you, but, it's just my opinion on why they're getting involved in this, you know, why the state is getting involved in people's yards is really beyond my, but I'm not smart enough to.
And it opens up most of the town except for like manufacturing or whatever.
It does, I'm not in favor of it, but that's why I think it would just, we, we get it on the books, the state matches the towns, Gary has it, and then as we get information, we go, we try to ratchet it down as best we can, and if that means amendments to the bylaw down the road, then that's what it means, but I think we're on the same page, that we wanna ratchet it down and we wanna get these, we would love more local, what's the word I'm looking for?
Control.
Control. Thank you, Joe.
It's very little that they're letting you have it, say, on anyhow.
I know, this is just beginning.
So would there be any expectation that we'd have any more information by May anyway?
Potentially, so, they've said that they're aiming to finalize the regulations sometime in February, but that's not enough time for us to be able to draft something, give it the time it deserves, some conversation and discussion it deserves.
Open, yeah, meetings and things like that.
May, May's tight because the deadline to submit for May comes up pretty fast after the March one, but, you know, we'll, we'll take it as it comes.
Yeah.
Also, I'd be surprised if they released them on time, it's just, given the volume that they're working with, I mean, they're still sorting their way through 3A stuff right now.
I would doubt that the state is gonna stay to a town. This is the by, this is the new law, but you're gonna have some flexibility here, you're gonna be able to, if you wanna tighten it up, you're gonna be able to, if, you know, if you don't want the 900, you want 750, you're gonna be able to do that. I doubt the state's gonna say that. I think the state's gonna say, if you wanna.
The first draft of the guidelines, and I don't wanna spend too much time discussing that because a lot of that could change, it's kind of speculative conversation, but the first draft that they released, most of the prohibitions that the board wished to make in our first go-around would not be permissible.
Yeah, and that's just the state.
The 750 wouldn't go?
The votes are drawn from the bylaw.
So it's really to get it on the books at this point?
What's that?
So it's really about getting it on the books at this point?
Yes.
And, you know, when we go to amend it at some point, that would be.
And we'll have, we'll have a firm sense of what we're allowed to do and what we're not. That way, we're not spinning our wheels guessing, you know, and putting something to town meeting that could get denied by the Attorney General's Office or taken to court on a case where we've not applied the statute appropriately. But for now, this is a conservative approach to making sure we're compliant with state law.
Yeah, this is the bare bones minimum, what the state's saying. I, I have no issue with getting it on the, on the warrant at this point, I'm, that's just where I, you know, that's just my, my opinion.
Codifying the bare-bones state requirement makes sense.
Yeah, just getting it on, on paper, and then as we get into it, I don't, I'm flexible, though, guys, you know, I don't know.
I, I, I think that we should get it on the books as we discussed with the bare bones, and then as requirements become available to us or information, we take action at that point, and, and then we, you know, we have some guidance and we take action, then trying to guess what the state's gonna allow us to do, and like Sarah said, and a lot of the things that we wanted, and I thought we were pretty restrictive, and I appreciate that, might not be allowed, you know, so, again, I just, you know, why the state is getting involved in people's backyards, I don't understand, but that's my own opinion.
I'll go with it. It could be a two-step situation, if, if we, if we do it in the bare bones and then for some reason we have to come back, that's what we'll do then, okay.
Is that?
That's fine.
Alright, should we make a motion? Yes, could I entertain a motion on that?
Make a motion that we accept it and pursue this.
Say, submit the draft article to the selectmen.
Submit the draft article to the selectmen.
As, in your packets.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, I got a motion and a second on accessory dwelling units. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. So on to the next one, section 5.4, non-conforming structures. This is the same, same exact material as, as last meeting.
Yeah, if you'd like a quick refresher on that?
Yeah, that'd be great, yes.
Yeah, sure, so these are slight alterations to the section of the bylaw concerning changes to non-conforming single and two-family residences. The board had accepted a recommendation from myself and the building commissioner to kind of talk about this a little bit more and eliminate some, what's a good word? Inequities in how special permits and variances are applied to personal residences and the types of additions you wanna make onto your home, depending on whether or not you have the right amount of lot area or frontage, and there's some inconsistencies. So, you discussed it, you convened a working group to be able to talk about this a little bit more with a representative from planning board, two representatives from planning board, two representatives from the zoning board, as well as the building commissioner. And so that group kind of came together and coalesced around some areas of consensus that you already had, and brought their proposals back to this group, and that's the latest draft that's in front of you. It has not changed since the last time we discussed this, and you accepted the recommendations of that working group. But essentially, what these changes do is they streamline the process slightly so that if you're a non-conforming lot or, a non-conforming lot by way of area or frontage, you're pre-existing non-conforming, right? If you want to change or alter the footprint of your home, what you're doing is you're kind of lifting the threshold so that the smaller, less intense types of projects no longer require a special permit. So you're changing that increase of habitable floor area, recall, it's currently quite low, you're lifting that up, which takes all these cases where they're almost unanimously always approved every single time. It doesn't require them to get a special permit. On the flip side, on the other side, is that these folks on the non-conforming properties, historically, if they wanted to make a non-conformity worse by getting closer to a side setback or closer to a rear setback, historically, the way it's written, it's only a special permit that's required. If you're living on a conforming lot, you have the right amount of lot area, you have the right amount of frontage, which is most properties in town, a majority of properties anyway, you would need a variance in order to do that, which is a higher level of review appropriately for something that could have a negative impact, it's a higher intensity, right, type of, of project. But if you were non-conforming, it only required a special permit, so the latest language brings that inconsistency with the conforming properties, variance required for new non-conformities across the board.
Yes.
Sorry, this one's a wonky one. Town meetings, eyes will probably glaze over.
I'm starting to get it, I think it's about the time, I've read it and I'm starting to understand.
I'm gonna have to practice that a lot, shutting it down.
Just, Joe Sheen and I represented this board with Sarah, Mike Sheen of the ZBA, and Rachel Churchill of the ZBA, and Gary Pelletier, the billing inspector, and I, I thought that, I, I would say it was one of the most productive meetings I've been in in a long time. You know, we can change the bylaw, we're in charge of the bylaw, but the zoning board of appeals, in this particular case, is the permitting authority, and they have to interpret what we do. So this was a, just so people understand, this was a great example of two boards coming together, and we wanted to make sure that what we put down as a bylaw, that the ZBA fully understands it, is in agreement with it for the most part, and can interpret it the way it was written, and that's always been a, with the ZBA, you know, it's interpreting the bylaw, and I think, I think Joe probably would agree with me that it, under Sarah's guidance there and having Gary there, and it was, I think we, I think we, we looked at everything and the variance part, and everything was explained, you know, first-grade level to, you know, somebody like me on some of this stuff. to, you know, somebody like me on some of this stuff. And I, I just want to thank the ZBA for coming and Sarah setting that meeting up and with Gary. And I thought it was a very, very productive meeting. Both boards are on board, hopefully with the vote. And it was something they can work with and, and they can, they understand it and are, you know, helped write it basically. So I just want to thank them for participating.
All right, that, that sounds, that sounds great.
I just wanted to add that we also learned a lot, which made it, uh, you know, see it from their perspective and how they have to manage this when someone comes in front of them. And, um, it come up, we came up with a much better product certainly by sitting down with them.
That's great. All right, well, I've, like I said, I've read it over a dozen times now. I've, I'm understanding it at this point. Uh, I think it might be a little bit challenging to get that message across at town meeting.
Well, when you're talking percentages and, you know, 25%, 75% rate, floor, floor ratio space, it gets...
It's the weeds, for sure.
It's definitely in the weeds.
Zoning weeds.
So, uh, well, if there's any, is there any other discussion on, um, on that? Or any non-conforming structures, section 5.4? No?
No.
All right, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to submit this to the board of selectmen?
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, great, moving along. Table of uses, commercial and personal panels in the MCMOD. Sarah, if you could, sorry.
This dang article again. So in short, the zoning district and the use, so the column and the row were created at the same town meeting. Um, and because we couldn't preemptively include whatever would be where those two things crossed, it is now blank. So this fills in the blank and says that commercial panels are not permitted in the MCMOD.
In the what?
The MCMOD, the MBTA communities district.
Sounds like a name of American names.
This is just filling in the blank because we, because we didn't know how the vote was going to turn out at the last town meeting, basically.
Yeah.
You couldn't put it in as an article and be irrelevant. I'll make a motion to, uh, pass on the, the article.
Yes, I got a motion to...
Second.
Yep, and I got a second for commercial and personal channels. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? No? Great, on to, uh, we can expect to forward that on to the, to the warrant. And, um, yeah, moving on to town meeting articles for discussion. Did we want to get into some of that tonight?
Um, just briefly.
Okay.
We had talked about a series of potential articles. Uh, we spent a lot of time talking about the possibility of an open space residential development bylaw, um, which we are still moving forward with. Alex and I spent some time incorporating all of your, um, your feedback and the areas where you had some agreement and to starting to put together a draft of what that might look like. Um, but obviously, if, if we're going to move forward with that one, we need a lot more time. It's just not going to happen for March. So, um, I put it on the agenda because I wanted to make sure that you had that update. I think you all probably already knew that already. But to the extent that we can continue to make progress on that one, we will. But it fell off of the list for March just because it's not ready for primetime.
A lot of pages in that one. That's going to take me more than 10 days. All right. Anybody have any ideas, discussion or input on, on open space residential subdivisions? Like to add at this point?
I do have a question. Does that mean it goes all the way back to next March or can, will this be brought forward sooner? We just...
That's at the will of the board, depending on how urgent you feel like it needs to be. Like Slavon Glasgow said, that there can be exceptions made out of that rotation depending on if something is urgent. You know, that would be a conversation you could...
This one is going to take a long time.
It, it'll take time.
This one will take a long time.
Yes, Joe?
I do have one question. On the, uh, section 8.2B, number one, we, we talked about a cottage court and that was taken off. Is that, just because it's not necessary, um, it talks about a group of, you know, it's the definition of a cottage court, a group of detached smalls, small C, uh...
Scale.
Scale, okay. Residential structures arranged around a shared courtyard visible from the street. Primary, primary unit is from the shared courtyard. Is that because of the, the way it's set up or, or it, we have no need to put that in because they can take care of that the way it is without being so specific, is that...
So cottage courts are a housing type the same way a single-family home, a duplex, a triplex, you know, might be. So I believe the board, when we discussed this last, kind of expressed comfort with single-family homes, two-family homes and maybe three-family homes, but not more than that or other housing types. So we struck the cottage court from the list. Cottage courts are, as a planner, I think they're really cool, but they're different. It's a, it's a different model. So, um, right now, when you have even a, a three-family, even a triple-decker, it's a structure and it has its own yard, right? It's got the, the open space component, is on the same lot where the primary structure is. With the cottage court, the cottages are fairly dense and they don't have a ton of open space. The house does make up the majority of the lot, but they're all oriented around a large shared space, um, with more communal amenities. So they're interesting, they're really interesting. Um, and lots of communities have really successfully done them. I think there's some in Concord that won some national awards.
I'm assuming they had a nice fountain and statue in the middle of those there in Concord.
I'm working with, with Sarah to, having her convince me that this is something that we need. I'm still not sold on this concept if it's, we're creating a problem or when there wasn't one.
Just, just picture a nice statue with the water coming out, raising the roof.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
I think maybe we're not ready for cottage courts.
Yeah, because I could see a, a communal people in the middle fighting over the grill, you know? And I don't, this is the sky, offline discussion with Sarah and I. She's trying to convince me that this is something that we need. I'm not 100% certain that it's something we need in Norwood, but she's working, she's working, she's working on it.
This is your bylaw, this is your process. The draft by, the draft bylaw that you had that included cottage, cottage courts, listed all of the options, right? Those are all of the things that communities have included in their OSRD bylaws. We don't have that definition currently in our bylaw at all. It makes sense not to include it if you were to proceed with an OSRD. But that's, that's why it was in there.
Someone else also told me that some places might call it a bungalow court.
Yeah.
The same, same thing. It, it, does it matter or does it mean that the size of the building is so small or...
Typically, yes.
Just for information, I was told by a Realtor very shortly, you know, within the last couple of weeks, that any new home in Norwood being built right now, the starting price is about 1.4.
I'm surprised.
That's the, that's the, that's the, somebody puts up a new house, that's where the, that's the starting price.
Well, the fix, fix old house at the corner of Rosemary and Wildpool, one for 1.2.
Yeah, he gave it...
That's a nice house, too.
Well, is there, is there anything wrong with the size is what I'm wondering? The cottage, is it different from a single-family, is it?
It really has more to do with your open space requirements on the lot and how they're situated with respect to one another. It's how you mass the, the lots in a subdivision. But typically, they do end up being smaller.
As far as this bylaw goes, you could, they could arrange in almost any, any possible way as, as long as they came in and we, we're going to look at it, right? And we're going to say, well, that, that works because you can have open space over here and you're, you're making the, I thought the idea was to have the houses a little closer so that you would have that.
Right. So an OSRD acts in complement to the subdivision control act. It, all of your subdivision rules and regs still apply. Anything that's not specifically addressed in the OSRD that alters or is different, your subdivision regs apply. So anything that would be an OSRD would still come to you for subdivision review. You would never have an OSRD that didn't have to comply with your subdivision rules and regs. What this says is, of the subdivision applications you would have gotten, they have another avenue for those properties that involves some conservation of open space and condensing the residential units on one side. It doesn't create new housing development options for parcels where it otherwise wouldn't have applied. It just says, how many parcels are there in Norwood that could potentially host a subdivision? You know, we know that there's not many, but there could be, you know, a handful. We've had, what, two or three in the last couple of years? Of those projects, could some of them had smaller homes condensed into one area with, you know, smaller yards, let's say, and then have 50, 60%, whatever percentage you decide and bring to town meeting, they decide, conserve this open space. Does that make sense?
Just, I'm going to throw a wrench in this.
Yeah.
And this is something that people through all our, our discussions, our public hearings on 3A, when we had all these things, one of the things everyone in the town is always asked about is an over 55 area. Could we, I'm throwing a wrench here. I've kind of, I've been, because I've been personally looking at all these over 55s throughout the area and there are all these kind of things that you're describing. Could we make this, or is there some statute that, that doesn't, that says we can't? Could we make this that these bylaws that we would create would work, but call it the over 55 community bylaw? So if you're willing to build an over 55 community, these bylaws would apply. You can build smaller houses, smaller lots, closer together, common space, all that that you see in most 55s. We don't have the room for a golf course unfortunately to have to put with it, but, but that's, that's the caveat, you got to put an over 55. To do it for, I'm still not convinced to do it for John Q. Public is the way to go. But I might consider it if we said, if you build an over 55, we're going to allow you to use these bylaws and build this smaller community, smaller homes, smaller lots, you know, all the things we talked about. You know, keeping the open space and all that. I'd be more willing to do that. Now, I don't know if that's something that if over 55, if you can't regulate that or if that's, I don't know if that's a...
So we would need to do a little bit more research on that. One into market conditions because, you know, you don't want to create zoning that there's no market for.
There's a huge market.
Well, for a long time, lenders haven't been financing 55 and over projects. That's why there's a demand for them because there hasn't been a supply of them because lenders aren't comfortable with them. So I think that's something we, we would want to research to make sure that we weren't enacting zoning that would ultimately just fall flat and never end up getting used. Uh, but that aside, um, I don't know that we could regulate that in the base of zoning. I, I, I feel strongly, I think that we couldn't. However, I do believe that there are ways to incentivize it. So you could offer some sort of a bonus for a 55 and over community.
You'd have to change the use table. I mean, you'd probably have to make another, another residential zoning district over 55 with its own set of uses.
No, not necessarily. It, it could be as an incentive in the OSRD. We could, I could research that. I could bring you more information on it.
Well, I, I, like I said, it just came to me and I, I threw it out because like when I go to these over 55 communities and Walpole, Eastern, North, Norton, all these, you know, they, they're, they seem to be, and I'm not talking like condos, like in an apartment building. I'm talking, uh, row housing or, or single-family homes or, you know, duplexes, uh, you know, townhouse.
The example I gave, I think, at one of our discussions was the development, that's where the former Westwood Lodge was. That was developed on their open space residential development bylaw. It's a 55 and over. It's a series of, um, like semi-attached...
Yeah.
Two or three at a time townhomes. And there's open space there. In that case, it's set aside for active recreation.
And that would kill two birds with one stone because a lot of people in this town, every, uh, open session we've had, informational session, over 55 always comes up. It's always one of the top, and we've always said, oh, Norwood doesn't have the, the room for it or whatever, but, and that may be true, but, uh, anyway, that was just a thought. You know, other things pop in and out of my mind.
Well, I think the market conditions too. I mean, that, that's another part of it, right? If, if you don't have an OSRD and you have, like, let's, not to pick on, on Pat because he was a good applicant, he was good to work with, but Brothers Way is one of the recent subdivisions that we had. Remember Brothers Way, off of Dean Street, kind of a straight-in cul-de-sac.
Oh, behind Tammer?
Yep, there's a row of, what was it, six, six homes under construction and they stretch all the way down the road, on the one side of the road. There was no flexibility in the zoning to have a smaller lot there, right?
Right.
So there's no incentive, no market incentive, no economic incentive to have a smaller house, right, on each lot, that doesn't make sense, right? But if there were an open space residential development bylaw in place, you know, more than half of that could have been conserved for open space and the developer still would have that motivation then to do smaller housing that might be those row homes or townhomes that aren't allowed in the zoning now but might be in an OSRD. That's how, one example of how you could use the OSRD to kind of create housing that a developer could actually afford to build, you know? If you, if you can only, if you're only allowing the large lots, then what you're going to get are large houses and they're more expensive and that's not usually conducive to the 55 and over, so.
I don't know how many developers just would go, you know, if, if a developer can get six houses at, you know, 1.5 or seven houses at 800, you know, what, what incentive is it for him to do this? You know, I mean, I, 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 I'd have to really, I got to wrap my mind, yeah.
There's cost savings for less infrastructure, so not having to build as many roads is a cost savings. We talked about some sort of a modest increase, a 10% increase, I think, was what the group had kind of felt okay with. We would probably want to research that a little bit more. You know, what does it take to make this more appealing? Because if you put it on the books, you actually do want people to, to use it, right? You want the open space, you want this to be enough of a carrot to choose, so.
Would it be possible to make it very appealing for a 55 with that number? You know, is that, is that one way to do it?
Well, I think you'd have to, you know, not being a contractor, but I think you would have to, to, a contractor would have to see where it's worth his while to do it. You know, if he can, you know, if he can make the, the same amount of, the money, his, his profit in an over 55 versus a not an over 55, you know, there's got to be some, he's not going to do it to lose money, you know?
What kind of square footage are you looking for? When you're looking?
Me personally?
Well, no, when you're looking at these things, is it like better than two...
They're nice, some of them are, some of these places are beautiful.
Sorry, Joe.
Yeah, I, I, you know, some of them are, some of them are small houses, you know? They're, they're, you know, usually a bedroom, first floor and a second bedroom and a loft upstairs. I mean, some of these things are, are beautiful, but they're getting big money too, they're getting...
But they're not huge, they're, they're smaller structures.
Yeah, 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 definitely.
Less yard.
Like a, like a small house. Like a, like a small house.
Not as much yard.
No, yeah, basically, HOA, you know, and all, you know.
Joe. I think that for years people have been talking about the fifty-five and over, although there are some difficulties and, and drawbacks if you market it. Not that you market it. Or you restrict it that way. You can market it and say, this would be perfect for someone over fifty-five, but when you start laying down rules and saying, well, you know, we can't have any young people in here, therefore when it comes time for them to sell, it might be difficult to sell it because you're, you only have a smaller population. But you can build something.
That's one of the backside, yeah.
You can buil, build it so that you entice them in to, to say that, this is great, this is great for someone who's downsizing to a smaller unit and it, you know, that kind of thing. And, and the same thing with, when it came to lending, we've, we've heard that, I think it was Tom Maloney was talking about that. Saying that you, a lot of banks did not want to finance these things because of certain restrictions like that. And maybe there are other reasons too, but if you, if you regulate it that way, that's one way, one thing, but I think if you entice it and they build it, especially under this, because this way you can lay it out and have smaller units and not have to take each lot and build the biggest thing you can to, to make sure you get the largest profit that you can.
Well, something to look into. It just, it just happened to pop into my head and.
No, it's, it's, it's a great need.
Tend to do.
It's a great need.
So there's, there's some research points that we'll work on.
But we're, we're a long way away on this one. We're a long way away on this one.
Yeah, I like the idea in general. I like the, the idea of conserving and taking a nice patch that's natural, leave it natural, you know, move, move the buildings and structures closer together. You know, I think, I think it's going to be very important to talk about buffers and I think it's going to be especially important when you get into buffers and stuff like that because you're going to be squeezing all that use into one side of the property.
Yeah. I mean, that's the other thing would, would, you know, again, you'd have to talk to contractors, developers, real estate people. You know, if you start putting houses closer together and you've got families, you know, you don't want to end up like, if you ever seen pictures of the houses out in Vegas, they're, you know, I call them mustard houses. You can pass the mustard out the window to the, the house next to you, you know, and it's just a driveway between two houses. And I don't think that would fly around here, but, you know. So it's a lot, a lot of work.
But on these, this is, you probably would not cater to families as much. It would be the fifty-five and over.
Well, that's why I'm saying you regulate it.
And if you, and if you throw a pickleball court.
Oh, my God, throw a pickleball court, Joe, you'd be right out there, huh?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman of the Glaubstank.
No, thank you. Do we want to move on floodplain or do you want to talk a little more about?
Um.
OSRDs. I, I know there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of pages here in the OSRD that we could.
And we don't have to, my intention was not to go in the granular on that one tonight, unless that was really what you guys were jonesing to do. More or less we have as much time as we need to. But I mean, this conversation is helpful because I think having some more follow-up items for us to be able to research will make a more productive conversation next time we do kind of come back together to talk about it. So this has been useful.
Floodplain overlay district then is next up.
This is just to put it on your radar. I think we've had these conversations before. We have a floodplain overlay district. The state has been saying for some time now that they're issuing, you know, new regulations for this. We have six months to put them, to adopt them once they're released. Alex and I were kind of debating whether it made sense to submit something as a placeholder before we actually had the language since there is like a sensitivity with getting it in, you know, and adopted by town meeting within six months of the release. The fact that we have town meeting in May, I think that was where we landed, that if somehow the state released the language for us to plug in, and it's not language that we would be authoring at all. It would really kind of be a cut and paste, much like the floodplain bylaw that we have is. It's just updating their standards.
Be very minimal debate or really.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're obligated to adopt it. But if, for whatever reason, you know, that does land, I'm still a little skeptical. I feel like we've been having this conversation for over a year now, so. But if we did get it in time to be able to post for, for May, you know, we could do that. So that's why this one is kind of under the, for discussion. It's on your radar. It's something that may come up. Don't be surprised if either Alex or I come to a meeting saying, let's talk about zoning articles for May because that one came in unexpectedly.
Did we address this not too long ago, a few years ago, or is that?
I don't recall what the year was. It's definitely before twenty twenty.
Yeah, we did at some point way back when.
Yeah.
It was something to do with floodplains.
Yeah.
Probably the previous map.
Was it, it wasn't the flood map yet, the map itself?
No, it's not the map, yeah, it's the.
Somehow Mark Ryan was involved in it too, as I recall.
TBD on that one.
All right.
The last one I wanted to, this is really just putting on your radar. We've had, I think, offline discussions individually, maybe all of you, talking about the central business district zoning. It was adopted by town meeting before the pandemic in the hopes of stimulating reinvestment into our mixed-use spaces in town. Specifically the, the Washington Street corridor and side streets down through Broadway. We've not really had many takers on that zoning.
Maybe two.
Yeah. And the two takers we've had have not been the types of projects that were envisioned. So over the last year, you know, I've had a fair number of conversations with property owners. I do get calls regularly. I think there's a lot of pent-up demand for the types of projects that we had hoped for, that town meeting envisioned when they approved this zoning. I do think that there's some urgency to get this right. Because I think, I think the demand is there. I think the market supports these types of projects. But our zoning is, is restrictive in ways that don't allow those projects to occur. Some of it, and we've talked about this, and this has been discussed in all of our housing conversations, some of it is the density. The density that is set as a maximum cap for the downtown overlay, it is low for, for comparable zoning in any kind of downtown area. But it's not, actually not just the zoning. You may remember that we had received a local rapid recovery program grant in twenty twenty to kind of do an assessment of our economic growth or lack thereof during the pandemic and kind of assess what the community needed. And so we worked with consultants on that report and part of that report was then giving us a subject matter expert to really give us a, an assessment of, of what the consultants identified were our chief issues. Downtown zoning was one of those chief issues that was holding back economic development and, and growth in town. And the assessment that we got, you may remember, really pointed to not just the density, but some technical rewrites that would be needed. There's a lot of requirements. I don't know if you've flipped through that section. There's a lot of requirements. There are a lot of drawings. There are a lot of diagrams. And many of the requirements, although they have good intentions, conflict with one another. And so those were the types of technical adjustments that she had recommended we look into. So it's not just a matter of lifting the density problem solved. I think if that were the case, we would have had that conversation already. It's more of a, a technical rewrite to go through and make sure that it's actually something that can be more easily understood and applied and implemented.
Yes, quick question for Sarah. How roughly, do you get a lot of people that come into the office inquiring about properties in the downtown business and then look at the bylaw and walk away?
Yes.
I mean, it does.
I would say two or three times a month.
Two or three times a month? So that's somebody looking for a, a property that wants to do something downtown? And, and.
We're not, we're trying to sell.
Is there a, is there a, a theme why they're walking away? Is it the density or is it more than that? Or why are they walking away?
So the, the density is a big part of it. That definitely needs to be addressed. Just like, and this isn't, I don't have the numbers committed.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking.
To memory, but just as, as an illustrative example of how things might compete. You might say that we want to encourage, you know, open space. Like, there's some pretty hefty open space requirements in the downtown overlay district. And when you're also requiring onsite parking and you're also limiting, you know, there's setbacks. So, you know how we did with the Norwood Central MBTA Communities District? We did the step back. So it could be, you know, twenty feet at twenty feet, but it couldn't reach the full four stories until you were much further away from the road. Like, the downtown overlay has a step back requirement. So you're, you're.
We put that in for that reason, so you don't get that canyon. Because I think Paul used to call it the canyon effect.
The canyon effect, right. But that eats away at the square footage also and it pretty significant, and it increases the cost of construction. So you keep taking, and then twenty percent affordable units, which is a valid and worthy thing to include in our bylaw, but you have to look at the whole picture. And when you look at all of that together.
I'd say enough's enough.
There's just nothing to build.
I go to Walpole and don't have to do it.
There's just nothing to build. Right. So I think we need to have a conversation about, and some of it is not even just about choosing priorities. Some of it really is about, like, there's redundant, there's like corner setbacks and right-of-way setbacks and build zone setbacks and it's very redundant. So some of it's eliminating redundancy and not actually changing our, our priorities at all. Some of it is, is, is actually that simple. But I, I also think it's worth having a conversation about what our priorities are for the downtown.
I agree.
If we're encouraging mixed use and we want to see stronger commercial growth in our downtown, you know, is it reasonable to require, you know, so much open space?
And this is something actually rubbed to you, to you?
Do we have a lot of open space on each parcel, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know where you, the, what's going on with the, the master plan, but this would be something that, you know, in the master plan would be a, a really look at the downtown again, right?
So I bring this up today of all days, right, January sixth. Not because we have any intention of getting it before in March, or even because I have a town meeting in mind where this might need to go. But I don't know that this one, and this is, I'm throwing this out to you to really kind of actively think on. You don't necessarily have to respond tonight. There may be a sense of urgency on this one where we don't want to wait until the comp plan's done. I'm just throwing that, that out there. Given the amount of calls that I get and how important the vitality of our downtown is to support the businesses that are already there and the residents who are already living here, I think it just wa, is worth thinking about. Is this something that we should wait until the comp plan is done? Or should we get started with that work now? I feel pretty confident that the comp plan is going to be a document that says we want to look more into revitalizing our downtown, right? Like, I, I would bet on that. I'm not a betting person, but that's something I'd feel comfortable betting on, that that'll come out as an action plan item. If we know that that's something that we need to do, does it make sense to get started on?
See, I, I agree. I think it, I think maybe this is something that we, we step up a few steps on the ladder. To your point, if we're turning away people.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're, you know, nobody's biting, everybody's walking, you know, every, no fish is grabbing the worm. They're all swimming over here. That, why, you know, what's the, you know, to use the phrase, the root cause, why, why are they leaving? Why aren't they building here? You know, we got a lot to offer. Why aren't they building here? And I think to your point, maybe this should, you know, I'm not saying we're going to get done by March. It's not going to happen, but this should go up the, up the ladder on a priority scale. And find out, let's find out why people are walking away and then what can we do to, you know, not give the town away. I'm not saying that, not, you know. But what can we do to this article, this bylaw to attract, you know, young, you know, people downtown and, you know, the restaurant business seems to be doing well. You know, we got a, you know, between nail salons and, you know, pizza joints where, where I think we're covered there. You know, bring in some other kind of businesses. Because like I said before, people aren't going to go to where the businesses are. The businesses are going to go to where the people are. You know, it's the way it works. And, and so maybe this gets kicked off. I didn't realize it was two or three a month that are interested in downtown.
We have a lot to offer.
Yeah.
I mean, downtown Norwood is a great place to be.
Yeah.
It really is.
I do, I do recall back when we did the last zoning on, on the central district, district. I do remember there was like, like open space, like it was a high number and we're looking, you're looking at lots and they're land, they're basically landlocked by Washington Street and side streets. And you're asking for open space. Where do you put it? You know, it's almost like they would be just knocking out part of a building to, to meet the bylaw for open space itself.
I think we were all on the board when we did this, right? You weren't?
No.
But I think the, I think at the time.
Just missed.
It was, you know, we, we brought this bylaw to town meeting with some reprehension or, you know, we, we didn't want to go crazy here. We, we wanted it to pass town meeting.
I think.
But I think we went, I think we went, on, we used a little caution, a little, you know, we, we kind of didn't go all in. We said, well, what, what will town meeting accept? You know, they're not going to accept, you know, eighty units per acre.
Right, I remember.
It's just not going to happen. You know, even though the, the, I call it Yankee Stadium, you know, the, the.
Yep.
No, what's the, what's the, Jana, Jana Hearn's old building on the corner, Bob Stacks? Dookie Follen, what's that building?
The Giles Building.
The Giles Building.
Giles Building?
Yeah, the Giles Building. It's got like a hundred and fifteen per units, yeah.
Do it together on that one. Like, yeah.
Yankee Stadium. I call it Yankee Stadium.
Sarah, the.
But I think so, that, I'm, excuse me.
Oh, no, no.
But I think at the time when we, we passed it was, let's, you know, crawl before, you know, before we.
I thought we, I think we were, weren't sure it was going to pass even at the time.
Right.
Very conservative at the time and we still didn't know if it was going to pass.
Right. So now it's time to look at it again.
Did some of that, open space, did we have bonus points there or something?
Oh, yes.
So that's another thing that I think needs to be addressed. The incentive portion, the public benefit language, the way it's written.
Some funny stuff is coming, yeah.
I don't think anybody likes it.
No.
I, I think the way it's written is valuable. I mean, we've employed incentives and bonuses with the MBTA communities successfully to be able to achieve things that we want. The way a bonus, I think, most effectively works is when the town, the community, town meeting coalesces around a priority and says, this priority is really important to us and we are willing to give and take a little bit in order to get more of this priority. So you know, the example we have for MBTA communities, one of them was the increased stormwater standards. Town meeting agreed that because flooding is such an issue in that Norwood Central corridor, that we offered that density bonus of meeting the new development standards in the stormwater handbook. But we clearly define what that is, right? This is, this is what you have to do in order to get the increased floor, building height or the increased density or the, whatever the, the flex is in the other requirements. You specify what it is that you're after in the bylaw. The way it's written now doesn't do that. It just says, give us something beneficial, you figure out what it is and we'll talk about it. Which puts you all in an impossible position to negotiate with developers who are just like, just tell me what to do. I, I don't know what to do. Just tell me what to do. It almost feels like an inappropriate conversation, right?
It was, it was with Day Street.
I think there's opportunities to improve that.
Yeah, you buy banners or something. Which I'm sure costs money, but it didn't radically change anybody's life.
The, the little job on Day Street.
But like you, you're put in a position then to come up with those ideas. And figuring out what the relative cost of that is, right? Well, you don't want to do banners. How about I just write you a check for something? You know, that's important. You have to figure out what that dollar amount is. Is that the, the best you? You have to figure out what that dollar amount is. Is that the, the best use of your skills, interests and your time? I think it puts more control back to town meeting, right, to the community itself to say, what are our priorities? What are the things we really want to see? What are we willing to flex on a little bit in order to get? Whether it's increased affordable housing, or maybe it's more open space, or, you know, maybe it's stormwater standards or whatever it is. Um, I think my recommendation would be to go in the direction of defining exactly what that is and including like density, not density, just incentives for that rather than the way it is now, which is kind of open-ended. I think that's an area that needs some, some alteration.
I agree.
Very good.
There you go.
Good meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's nice.
Nice job.
Yeah, thank you. I, you know, I try.
So should my office start doing a little bit more research and kind of moving this forward? Is this something that you want to see?
I would say if, if you're getting offers.
The downtown?
I, after, after our little discussion here tonight, and we're turning away a couple of people a month, or people that are interested, not that they, but people are coming in in the office. If you said, well, no, no one's even coming in, well, that's one thing. But if they're coming in and looking and they're walking, are they going someplace else or are they just tire kicking? But I think it needs a, I think we need to look at it again and, and.
The risk is, I don't, I don't, you know, the, the public has entrusted us and has funded, you know, the, the comprehensive plan and, you know, I, I think it's a really understandable response for somebody to say, why don't you wait until the comprehensive plan is done and then you all know which direction we want to go. And I, I don't want to give the perception, um, to any members in the community that we're trying to circumvent that community engagement and the public involvement, because that's really important. Um, so I think that's my biggest concern, right, with moving forward sooner rather than later, because I, I want to respect how important that is. At the same time, I don't know that the changes we need to make of this fundamentally change really the priorities that town meeting was going for in 2019 when this passed. Um, I think it's, it's mostly fine tuning.
I think most people, when this passed, that town meeting, it passed fairly easily. And I think that the consensus was that we need to do something for the downtown. And I think that the, the people were, were, the, the mission statement, if you want to call it, of attracting, you know, more people downtown and allowing some, a little bit of apartment density down there, I think that was very acceptable to the town in that area at the time. And I don't, I don't think we're stepping on anybody's toes here by trying to tweak it. So I, I would say, yeah, let's work on this.
I'm, I'm looking for, for direction from you all on this one. I've, I've been batting it around in my head for a while now, and finally I was like, you know, let's just go to the planning board and see what they think.
Well, one of the variables that you're talking about, you, at the beginning, you mentioned, uh, uh, open space, et cetera, but one of them was parking. I don't have in front of me what the parking requirements are for the, that, you know, that pro, that area, but I, I'm wondering if the market can be tested to see if developers are interested in reducing parking, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
I can tell you that.
Oh, no, but I mean, but the market will, will dictate if, if there's a certain type of, uh, you know, young, mobile, urban, working in Boston, taking the train, wants to wa- walk to restaurants. I mean, that, that might be an interesting thing to look at to see if we can take a big bite out of the parking.
Parking is always an issue. I mean, I, you know, I'm old school. I get it. I wouldn't want to go to live in an apartment if I said, do I get a parking space? And they say, no, you're on your own.
Some people nowadays might.
Yeah, some people, you know.
Rather have a phone than a car.
You know, with, with off-street parking now in the winter and you gotta, you know, and, and.
There might be people that just want to avoid cars.
You can't use the public lots and, and, so, I mean, it's, parking is always, you know, and all of developers, they want to eliminate parking. I, I, you know.
My two cents, I think it'd be great if we could go after this, uh, on this board, you know, if, if we're turning down ideas and developers and people that want to invest in the center of town, that's, that's not a good way to, to kind of operate. So if we can focus on this and do it in a, in a good way, you know, there are, I think there is a lot of fat on, on our zoning currently. Um, that's my two cents.
I think what's exciting is that we, you mentioned something about like giving, giving it away or something, right?
You don't want to give the town.
Give, yeah, right. And I, I want to be clear, like, we are in such a fabulous position. We are in the driver's seat on this one, right? It's a tremendous asset, our downtown. It's a place that people want to be and people want to invest in, and we're not giving it away and allowing fundamentally the downtown to change in ways that we don't think are right. Um, we really, we are in a fantastic position to be able to control the growth in ways that we think really makes sense for the town.
As long as the state doesn't step in and say, okay, your downtown is going to be required to do this. I hope you.
Right now, we're, we're good.
Train stations, we have a beautiful downtown. There's so much to work with.
So much to work with.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of demand for it, and I think we can easily tweak our, our bylaw really to be something that allows some of the investment we want without, you know, fundamentally changing what's wonderful about it.
Beautiful.
Yep.
All right.
All right, so we will get started.
Is that it, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, we, we just have to check the new calendar. Um, is there any dates on there that you know you'll be in Boca or Dominican or down the Cape? You can't make it, just mark it out.
At this point, I looked at it, but I don't, uh, I don't know what my summer schedule is at this point.
You can probably kind of.
But. I'll let you know if I, is there, is, there's nothing for me right now that's definite out.
All right.
Put it on your calendars for next year.
All right.
Mark your calendars.
Approval of minutes.
Can I actually, sorry to be a pain.
Yes.
Could I ask you guys to vote on the calendar?
Oh.
We typically take a vote on the calendar.
I'll make a motion to accept the cali- calendar for 2025 as written.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, it passes.
There's three sets of minutes.
Yep.
The first one, um, is from August. It was a bit of an oversight. I think it was intended to get into your packets at some point in September and then wasn't because we had a meeting that was canceled. So we, we realized with a start that that one actually had not been technically approved. So that's why that one.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, all three minutes.
Second.
We got a motion and a second on the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We got a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good night. Thank you.
Thanks so much, everyone.